All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the hearing of the Government Operations Committee, Tuesday, January 30, 2024, 3:00 p.m., Conference Room 225. First, the housekeeping announcement. Thank you for joining us for today's GBO hearing. We're convened in Conference Room 225. The meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. In the unlikely event we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business at 3:30 p.m., Thursday, February 1, 2024, Conference Room 225, and a public notice will be posted on the legislative website. In order to facilitate this hearing in a timely manner, we will be enforcing a two-minute limit on testimony, but somehow I don't think we really need to do that today. So with that being said, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda, SB 27, sorry, 2579 relating to bottle filling stations. First up, we have Keith Regan for DAGs.
Thank you, Chair. Gordon Wood for the Department of County General Services. The department stands on its written testimony in support with comments, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We have late from Councilmember Radien Cordero in support. And then finally, a late testimony individual from Mr. Ben Robinson in opposition. That's all we've received on the measure 2579. Anybody in the audience or Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, are there any questions? I have a quick one of DAGs. Just to show the world that their individual email testimonies are read. Mr. Robinson brings up a good point. I mean, he likes the idea, but he's like, why do you need a building to do this? I mean, it's a good question. Why do you need a... Is this something you guys could do already on new buildings going forward after 2025?
I believe we are doing this with new buildings, and I know that we're doing it with existing buildings. We've installed them over at Kalani Moku, for example, and it's one of those things that I think the time has come, and perhaps Mr. Robinson is correct.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. Appreciate it. Any questions? If not, we will move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is Senate Bill 2306. This is relating to AEDs or defibrillators. Sorry, I always can't pronounce that word. First up, we have Yukio Cross testifying for Executive Office on Early Learning, written in support, Keith Regan, Department of County General Services.
Good afternoon, Chair. Committee, Jimmy Carata, DAG Central Services for Keith Regan. We stand in support with comments.
Okay, thank you so much.
Available for comments.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you for coming up. Next, we have Gary Lum, Hawaii State Fire Council in support. Councilmember Radien Cordero again in support. We have James Ireland, MD Honolulu Emergency Services, written in support, Pamela Foster, AED Institute. She has written in opposition. And then we have numerous individuals who testified in support. Are there any here in the audience or on Zoom who'd be willing to testify or want to testify? Yes, sir, please come on up.
Aloha, senators. I'm James Ireland. I'm the Director of the Honolulu Emergency Services Department. With me is Ian Santi, the Deputy Director. I've worked in EMS for over 35 years. Ian's worked in EMS for over 25 years. In the 70s, in the 1970s, the only way to shock somebody out of an abnormal rhythm was to use a defibrillator, which was a manual device, and you had to know what you were reading on the screen. Doctors could use it, paramedics could use it. But with the advent of computers and advanced technology, from the 90s on, we used automated external defibrillators, where the computer reads the heart rhythm for you so you can actually place these on someone and save someone's life with very little training. In a cardiac arrest situation, every minute that goes by, survival goes down by approximately 10%. And so you can imagine it takes about a minute to process a 911 call. It takes about a minute for the first responders to get responding. And then like in a building like this, you'd have to park outside and get to the elevators, and it could be five to 10 minutes before a professional rescuer or responder got to the patient's side. And when you're looking at 10% loss of survivability every minute, 10 minutes goes by, and that correlates really well with what the National Cardiac Arrest Survival is, and it's about 10%, about 11% on a Wahoo. But we learn very early on in 80s, if they're put in places where people can use them and you train people how to use them, those survival rates can go dramatically higher. And one of the best indications that's outside of Hawaii is in casinos in Las Vegas, and they've achieved about a 70% survival rate because they don't want to lose any customers. You know, but that's a testament to training in AEDs. In Rochester, Minnesota, at the Mayo Clinic, they have them widespread in their town, and their survival was about 60%. Now, in the early 2000s, the airports here in Hawaii put them in all the airports, did widespread training, and the survival at Honolulu's airports, and I put this in my testimony, somewhere around 70% now. And they have saved 82 lives in the last 20 years because of this robust AED program. We've put them in all city buildings, and maybe Ian can give you some background on that with his testimony. But we just find them very useful. They save lives, and we can achieve the kind of success that other cities and programs have had here in Hawaii with a bill such as this.
Good afternoon, Chairs. Again, Ian Santi, Deputy Director, Emergency Services Department for the city. City and County of Honolulu has an ordinance that happened around 2017 and 18 that required all city buildings and construction buildings with greater than 50 occupancy to have AEDs within them. So we've had quite a few saved in city facilities, as well as most recently one in our council chambers last week.
So thank you for this opportunity. We're available for questions.
We'll have you stay here for expediencing. Anybody else in Zoom or the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, Vice Chair, any questions? A quick question I had was on one of the people who testified, testified in opposition because of the certification program that's required by DAGs, and they felt it could be an inhibitor. What do you say to that? I mean, are these devices such that with the instructions and such that somebody could use them? Or do you have to go through this kind of this certification? And how would this program, you know, given the concerns, given, how would it work?
So I think that having an American Heart certification had been the standard in years past, but we now recognize that there are many other organizations that can do satisfactory training to make someone competent and comfortable using an AED. So I would agree that we shouldn't necessarily tie this to any one program, but maybe any instructional program that's approved by the Director of Health or something along those lines where there's some, at least one check and balance, but yet we're not locked into one proprietary lane. And again, the American Heart Association has a great program, but they, there is a cost associated with taking a class and getting their cards, whereas maybe other programs don't necessarily bring that same cost or maybe a higher or lesser cost. So I think having some flexibility in the program with the instruction, I think, is a good thing.
What if, like, my scenario, you know, somebody has an incident and there's nobody training around? Could you grab one of these things and deploy it and be able to, you know, save their life or without anybody who's certified or has that knowledge?
So, so one of the things is, when you call 911, are emergency medical dispatchers walk you through it? So one of the questions they do ask is, is the person under conscious? If you say yes, they talk, ask you if there's a pulse, or if you say yes, they ask you if there's an AED nearby. So they would tell you to go get the AED, and they can walk you through it over the 911 call.
Well, I'm talking about like this situation. I'm in the airport, and there's an AED here.
Yeah.
I walk up, the guy's having a heart attack.
Yeah.
My only choice is to grab the thing and deploy it.
Yep, so you grab it and you call 911 at the same time.
At the same time?
Yeah.
You call 911?
You always call 911 first. So the hard part would be...
It'd be a hard reality, though.
Correct.
Come on, brother, really. I mean, I'm trying to save a guy's life. I'm not going to call 911 first.
But that's a great point. But the point is, if you try to save the guy's life and it's unsuccessful, we're not coming. So if you're not getting the professional rescuers on the way, the fire department, the police department, EMS providers, and you're trying to resuscitate somebody without actually activating 911, that's the most important thing we teach everybody. When I teach a CPR class, my first thing is make sure you call 911. The second thing is turn the machine on. The AED will talk you through the steps by steps. But if you don't call 911, you're not helping anybody at that point either. So it really has to be emphasized. And if you're not a trained professional, your number one thing is to call 911, get the AED, and follow the instructions.
So definitely from the RFP, hopefully that will be...
Yeah.
But I would say if you've never even opened one and looked at one, it would be tough to fumble through it, even though it's telling you what to do. If you'd had even as much as 10 minutes of training once, you could fumble through it and get it to work.
So do you see a campaign needed to, like, the CPR?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay. So that seems to be the most logical way to ensure that somebody nearby might have...
And one of the things I put into my testimony is what, another comment I just had about the bill is if you tag in mandatory high school education and AED CPR use as part of the curriculum, then you'd have generations of people younger than myself coming up through Hawaii's ranks, no matter what they chose to do as a profession, who at least had some familiarity with one of these things and could use it on me, God forbid, if I ever needed it.
Very good. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, next up, we have 2317.
Actually, Chair, I got one question.
Oh, please, by all means.
Is DAGs here? Yeah. You'd said in your testimony that you'd support a pilot program to first be implemented in the state capitol. Is that correct?
Correct.
Really? Are we not ready for this? I mean, the needs there, and we put it off another year, have a pilot?
There's money involved with it. The data we collect off of deploying into the capital where there's a lot of places of assembly give us information how to take it on in the rest of the buildings, lessons learned. So we think that's a prudent step before just buying a whole bunch or leasing a whole bunch and getting them out there.
Wow, thanks, Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you so much for being up here. Next up, we will go to the next bill on the agenda, which is Senate Bill 2317 relating the state capitol tours. And we have no testimony on this. Anybody feel like they just want to jump, chime in? DAGs? Okay, being that being said, we'll move on to the next one on the agenda, which is SB 2202 relating to small purchases. First up, Bonnie Kahakui, Procurement Office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. Bonnie Kahakui, Acting Administrator and Chief Procurement Officer. The State Procurement Office stands on strong opposition to this bill, which would raise the small purchase threshold from 25,000 to 50,000 using the electronic procurement system. Available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Andrew Kuanu, City and County of Honolulu, written in support. Diane Nakagawa, County of Hawaii, Office of the Mayor, also written in support. That's all we have on this measure. Anybody in the audience or out on Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, member question? Not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is 2536. First up, State Procurement Office.
Good afternoon, again, Chair, Vice Chair. The State Procurement Office stands on its written testimony in opposition, but I will say that we did meet with interested parties and are looking at ways to see if there's another avenue to provide the solution that they're looking for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have late from Corey Kubota testifying for QWDLP. Oh, go ahead.
Hi, sorry I'm not there in person, but thank you very much for the opportunity to testify. I have submitted written testimony. You know, just wanted to voice my support for some sort of bill to, really, at the end of the day, we're trying to create jobs in a technical field that is becoming very, very difficult to find here locally in Hawaii. And, you know, one of the, you know, my firm, we're just, we're a local firm. We try to hire from Hawaii. We try to hire kids that go away to school and give them an opportunity to come back and be professionals here in Hawaii. But it's becoming increasingly difficult to operate here. We are brick and mortar. We are invested in Hawaii. And, you know, I'm scared for the future of my profession and people with the skills that I have. You know, some people think, you know, a CPA firm is just preparing a tax return, and it goes way beyond that. And it is not a commodity that we sell. It is truly a service. Accounting is the backbone of any business organization. You know, you can talk to anybody within the state, and I know you have representatives of DAGs in attendance. And the state is not immune to the shortage of this technical skill that we are trying to create. But we, in order to create jobs, pay, you know, young professionals a living wage here so they can, you know, and create that opportunity, we need to be able to cover those costs. You know, we're seeing shrinking enrollment in accounting at the University of Hawaii, and it's not going back up. You know, at first it was thought it was the pandemic, but it's still, the numbers are still depressed. And, you know, some of the feedback that I receive is we need to be able to pay accounting graduates more. But in order to do that, I need to generate the revenue sufficient to be able to bear that at higher cost. And, you know, we're trying our best. And I'm, we're at a very critical point in the accounting profession where you'll see a lot of business organizations, accounting professionals are, they want to retire. They are leaving the workforce. We don't have an adequate population of professionals with this skill to take those positions because we don't have enough kids going into accounting in school. Kids that want to pursue accounting, you know, as a professional, a lot of times they're going away, they're leaving Hawaii. They're not coming back. And so, you know, we're hopeful. We, we support this bill primarily as an opportunity to enable us to develop that skill for the future of Hawaii. And that's what, really, what all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you so much for coming on, testifying. Appreciate it. Next, we have, sorry, Darrell Nida testifying for CNY CPAs LLC. They have written support. That's all we received on the measure. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, anybody else on Zoom? Seeing none, is there a question from the Vice Chair on this measure? No? Okay, take it as another candor at that. Next up, 2570. First up, we have Bonnie Kahakui, State Procurement Office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. The State Procurement Office stands on its written testimony, supporting the intent, but we do have some comments to clarify the language. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Ryan Sakuda, GCA. Yeah, okay, thank you so much. Appreciate your written. Nan Shin, individual, written in support. All we received on 2570, anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none on Zoom, Vice Chair, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is, my glasses are very dirty today, 2827. First up, Tim Lyons, Subcontractors Association, written in support. Lance Anoy, Ralph Anoy, written in support. Ryan Sakuda, again, GCA. Thank you so much. John Bastard, King &amp; Neil, written in support. John Romanowski, Jass Glover in support, and Richard Heitzel, individual in support. All we received, is there anybody else? Seeing none, Vice Chair, question? Seeing none, we will move on to the next bill, which is 2828. DAGs?
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. Again, Gordon Wood for the Department of County and General Services. We stand on our written testimony, supporting the intent and offering comments.
Thank you so much for you for being here. That's all we've received on the measure. Is there anybody else wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, let's see. Question? This bill actually was generated from the WHAM info we think that we had with the department.
Yes.
And it appears they supported, but now you only supported the intent. I mean, why'd they shift?
The, the shift is due to the fact that we're already initiating efforts to do this on our own administratively.
Okay, so you don't need the bill at all then?
That's correct.
Okay, I appreciate the honesty. Okay, thanks so much. One less thing we have to deal with. Okay, that being said, let's move on to 2482 relating telecommunication. And first up, we have Kirby Shaw for the DCA, written in support. Daintri Ball, sorry, Bartutos, State Council on Developmental Disabilities, written in support. We have late from Stacy Aldrich, Librarians. Sorry, having a hard time with the names today. Keith Regan and DAGs with comments.
Stand on our...
Stand on your written comments, great. Okay, that's all we have. Is there anybody else wanting to testify? Seeing none, Vice Chair, question? Seeing none, let's go on to 2116, Board Meetings. First up, Cheryl Park.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. Cheryl Park, Director of OIP. You know, after, in addition to our written testimony, I'm wondering if this bill, I'd like to define remote versus in-person meetings because with a remote meeting, you still have to have an in-person location, but the board members don't have to actually show up at any of the in-person locations. They can all participate remotely. With an in-person meeting, the board members have to be at one of the in-person locations. And when the law was changed, there was, the in-person location was the default, and people wanted to be able to see board members in person. This would kind of like change it to require that all meetings be remote, not in person. So you're not going to see board members in person. That's one of the downsides of this bill. The other thing is that not all boards are, have the support or ability to do remote meetings. We have some really tiny boards that have no help at all. So if you're going to start requiring all meetings to be remote and having to be done through, using ICT or interactive conference technology, it will be difficult to implement. So those were some concerns that we had about this bill, along with whatever else I said in here about the archiving. The archiving is another question. We don't know what you need with that. And it could be a big cost for the state to have, for the boards to have to archive their own minutes on their websites. Because right now, they have to, they can provide the minutes to the state archives, but this bill seems to be saying that you have to also keep it on the board's website, which is an entirely different matter. So there are some issues that we have with this bill.
Okay, thank you for being here. Appreciate your testimony. Next up, League of Women Voters, written in support, DCCA.
Good afternoon, Alani Keoki, Licensing Administrator for the Professional Invocational Licensing Division. The department appreciates the intent of the measure and offers comments. We do note some of the issues that we've had with our virtual board meetings, including inappropriate behavior by members of the public. We do also recognize the convenience of having virtual meetings, but I do agree that the costs associated with holding virtual meetings, especially for some of our smaller boards, is significant. We also don't have, like the legislature, the technical staff to run each of our board meetings. So our preference is that this remain permissive. With regard to the second part of the bill, archiving board meeting minutes, I guess because it's not defined what archiving is, just for the committee's information, most of our boards, if not all, have posted to our websites, our boards and commission websites, meeting minutes as far back as 2011 to present. Whether that is archiving officially, that is what we are currently doing.
Thank you. Appreciate that perspective. Okay, we have Pamela Bray, Crime Victim Compensation Commission, written in opposition. And finally, we have Ben Krepp's Public First Law Center.
Public First Law Center. We support this bill. We think it's a good idea, remote access for all public meetings and archive meeting minutes. It'll promote public participation, and we support this bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for being here. That's all we have on the measure. Anybody else? If not, members, question? If not, we will move on to the next one, which is, let's see, 2637, Public Agency Meetings. First up again is OIP.
As we indicated in our written testimony, we support this bill. Maybe a full six days, as proposed by the bill, may not always be necessary. You might have an emergency situation that requires a shorter period of time, but it's good to have more clarity in this area, and it is consistent with what we're saying, that you shouldn't have the third meeting and discussion by the board on the same day that the report has been presented by the PIG. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So much. Next up, Doug Mellor, League of Voters, sorry, League of Women Voters. Dele Matsuo, individual, UH Border Regions. And they have comments, and again, Ben Krepp's.
Public First Law Center. You have our written testimony. We support this bill. The intent of permitted interaction groups was to strike a balance between board efficiency and public participation. And this bill promotes that intent by slowing things down just a little bit. That's one week. So that the PIGs aren't used to rush decisions through without adequate public participation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to testify on the measure? Not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is 2517, again, OIP, since it's near day, doesn't it?
You know, after we submitted our written testimony saying basically it's up to you, it's a policy decision you can make, I'm not sure what you're intending to do with this bill because it can actually be read a different way from what we had interpreted it initially. Because, you know, when we say on page two, we have that proviso, provided further that any vote to hire an officer or employee shall be conducted in an open meeting. It made me start to wonder, in that section one, on page one, were you really only talking about having the process to hire the person, be done in an open meeting through open deliberation, but allow for a, the discussion and vote, not vote, but discussion and interviews to actually take place during the executive session? I'm not really clear. So I think it has to be maybe clarified more for us, and then we can come back and, you know, give you a better opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Next up, we have Border Regions, University of Hawaii, written comments to the committee. And finally, Mr. Krepp's Public First Law Center.
We support the idea behind this bill, but we do think that it needs some more work to accomplish its intent. As written, it falls short of what the existing law already provides. But as noted, I believe in OIP's testimony, there are questions or, you know, some compliance issues with the current law. So some clarification would do some good.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate it. That's all we have on the measure. Anybody else? Members, questions? If not, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is 2172. First up, we have DCCA.
Good afternoon, Alani Keoki again. The department appreciates the intent and offers comments on this bill. The boards and commissions attached to the department typically follow the Robert's Rules of Order, which recommends that the presiding officer or chairperson, if he or she is not present, as well as the vice chairperson, the next present member calls the meeting to order, then a vote is taken, and an election of a chairperson pro tem is offered. We recommend that this remain in place versus requiring that the next, the tenured member on the board be elected as the chairperson pro tem.
Thank you. And we also have Board of Regents from the University of Hawaii. They have written comments as well. That's all we have written for 2172. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill on the agenda, which is 2292. First up, Board of Regents, University of Hawaii, written comments. Louis Salaveria, Budget and Finance, written with comments. And DCCA?
I stand on my commission comments.
That sounds good to me. Okay, that's all we have on 2292. Anybody else? Seeing none, let's move on to the next bill on the agenda, which, I think that's the end of it, isn't it? We are at the end. Wow, people, this moved really fast. Gosh, it was so much fun. Anyway, what we're going to do is, as we do traditionally, is we're going to defer time certain, all the items on the agenda for a vote, 3:00 PM on Thursday, room 225. And let's make sure that I have all my end notes, and that's it. So anyway, thanks for joining us in Mahalo.